Hi, everybody.
Hello, Rosemary. Hello, Joe. Hi, Janet.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
It it is five thirty. And we have a quorum. Do you know if there's anyone else we expect to be at the meeting? Yeah, well, I guess I can call the meeting to order. This is the planning commission meeting February eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Happy New Year, everyone. And we can get started. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, if no adjustments to the agenda, we can move on to approval of minutes. We have the minutes from the December fourteenth meeting. Does anybody want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments or corrections or changes to the minutes that anybody has? Okay, if there are no corrections or changes, thank you, Joe, for doing such a nice job with the minutes, by the way.
Well, thanks for noticing.
So all in favor of approving the minutes from December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, say aye or or raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have approved the minutes. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And since we don't seem to have any any members of the public, I think we can move on to old business. And as discussion of the interim zoning changes, density and lot, lot information. Maybe I can turn the floor over to Janet and we can start running through the material she sent to us.
Sure, happy to. Thanks, David. In the packet after the meeting minutes, you saw that I gave you the four-page summary that ACCD did of the the Home Act bill, predominantly most of the changes that we want to try to tackle is on the first and a little bit of the second page, right? So I just wanted y'all to have that in front of you. Next was the pages that I changed in the zoning ordinance based on our discussions from December. So what happened was I had to make sure that all the changes were made that talk to all the different sections of the zoning. So, for example, it's okay to change the lot size, but we need to make sure that it to allow for, not the lot size, the the ability for somebody to expand the number of units in a pre-existing building. But what if that building is non-conforming? Meaning that it does not conform to the rules that we follow today. I added language that I think we all kind of need to talk about. So, David, I don't know if you want to run through like a series of order, but how we started if when we looked at basically, if you want to start at the table of uses or the dimensional table, we talked at length about changing the lot size, if you recall.
Yeah.
And I apologize, I did not number the pack, the board packet. I should have done that. I've been trying to be in better habit of doing that for everybody. It would be, well, three quarters of the way through. It's the one that's called use and definition. And it starts with lots, setbacks, building and density. So I thought that was a great springboard start.
You have the page number?
I can look it up. Hold on. Yeah, page thirty-three of thirty-six.
Okay. So I'm looking at page, actually, it looks like thirty-two. Oh, you've got it there.
So if you're looking at this in your packet, we talked about
I think it's it's page thirty-three of thirty-six in the packet, but the page number on the bottom of the page is thirty-nine.
Right, thirty, thirty-nine in the zoning. I'll wait for everybody to get caught up.
Okay, well, you've got it shared, so we can all see it.
So we talked about removing the density for UC two. So you see down here I did. And then MU three, R four and general business, if you recall, that was about meeting the five lots per acre, five. What is it? Yeah.
Yeah, that makes it
Five or more units per acre. So I've reduced the required square footage. For our four, for example, went from ten thousand eight hundred square feet, which is which was, well, is currently one dwelling unit for every quarter of an acre. So so we've reduced that to meet the state requirement of the Home Act. We talked about doing the same in general business, the same in MU three.
Yep.
And then that translates to down here, making sure the density matches. It matches. One thing I don't know if you folks want to talk about is it doesn't have to match. Because this is saying, I'm not sure it should, honestly. It should be one dwelling unit for at every a different amount of square footage.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's there, I've been thinking about that a lot.
Yep.
And and I'm not quite sure how this would be applied. Because if if somebody has, if there is an acre that has five lots on it with four single-family houses, this would not allow anything but another single-family house, if I'm reading it correctly.
That's right. That's why I wanted to, we need to talk about this a little bit further.
Which is what the statute allows us to do. But the problem, you know, one of the problems from administrative standpoint is you can draw an acre around a particular lot in a whole bunch of different ways. So it could be the houses next door. It could be a strip of five houses in a row. It could be some kind of gerrymander-looking thing to do that. And I'm not sure how a zoning administrator would go about figuring that out. So I'm not sure that as it's written, it works, but I
No, that's what I was saying. It doesn't work.
I mean, I don't think you could reasonably determine what's an acre, you know, around a particular lot. Because it could be ten different combinations of of land. But then the other question at the other end of it is the state law would allow up to for one lot, if there's water and sewer, up to four-unit housing structures on a lot.
I don't know where you're getting the four, because the the bill says five.
Okay, five, well, if it's five, the same same thing, that that would be twenty-five, potentially twenty-five living units on that's on that one acre in in what now is a what right now is a single-family district. And I'm not sure that's a really great situation either, though I don't think it would necessarily come to pass, because there's a lot of land that's already built. So that's sort of my conundrum in my mind, is what's a reasonable way to go about doing it?
So think of it this way, if we left our four at ten-eight, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we we did, we know that one acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. If you divide that by five, that's where we got our eighty-seven hundred, right? If we left our four at ten-eight, we could change, we could lower this to some to meet that standard. But that's that's a way to get around it mathematically.
So if we left it at ten-eight, we could lower the maximum residential density? But I
That's what I think.
If I
Because this is just saying it needs to be a minimum lot size.
Right, but if the statute, I think the statute, at least the interpretive thing that came from the state at one point, said if you didn't have the lot size at least five per acre, then then that would allow, I guess it's up to five units to be built on each lot as opposed to five units per acre. So I mean, the state's not being particularly helpful in in the information they're providing to get to give planning commissions really a reasonable way to go about this. That's my reading.
Yeah, we need to allow five or more units per acre.
Right.
So that's the first part.
Right, but if we allow five units per acre, then you have the problem of administrative.
Yeah.
So you know, one way maybe to go at it is allow more, you know, say, for example, that any single, you know, that single family is now just described, defined as one or two, you know, a single or duplex, that would help with some of it. But I'm not sure what else. I think Caitlin had a some, do you have your hand up?
Becky did.
Oh, Becky, I'm sorry. Becky has her hand up.
I I do have my hand up. So I know I missed our last meeting, for which I apologize, and I'm still catching up. Could you explain this in another way? Like, I'm like, I'm struggling to visualize what it is that we're talking about. Like, I read the state's thing. And I thought I understood it, but now listening to this, I don't think I fully understand what we're, what problem we're wrangling with.
Right, we are, we're trying to meet the new rule that says we need to allow for five or more dwelling units per acre. So I'm going to use our four, because that's our, right now, it says our highly residential zoning district. Ten thousand eight hundred square feet is the current lot size requirement. And it also says one dwelling unit for every ten thousand eight hundred square feet. So what that is, and what is that saying? That's saying hold on a minute.
I mean, I get what that's saying, or I think I get what that's saying, which is like, that only lets us have four units in an acre.
Right now.
Right now, right.
Yeah.
I think what I'm struggling to understand is what is the, you guys are talking about shifting one number versus shifting the other number, like if you shift the minimum lot size versus the maximum residential density? Like, could you, could you just elaborate more on like what doing one or doing the other means?
Can I take a crack at what I think?
Go for it.
What the issue is? So the state says you can't, you have to allow five dwelling units per acre. That's the eight thousand seven hundred square feet. But it also says that on any, that basically, any place that has water and sewer, which is most of the city, you you have to allow up to a five-unit structure on that lot. So you have a lot that's that's eighty-seven hundred square feet. Do you have to allow up to a building with up to five units, as long as it meets the setbacks and parking requirements and all? And but the state seems to have a loophole that says if you set your lot size at five per acre, you can, you could choose to only allow five units per acre, which would mean one single-family house each lot or two duplexes and one single family within that acre. And that strikes me as almost impossible to administer. Because how do you draw line around one acre when a lot can be part of a whole lot of different acres? Does that make sense?
Thank you. Yes, that is, that is helping things coalesce.
So then the question is, how do we find some way of addressing this that's not an administrative nightmare? And allows more housing, but maybe doesn't allow five, five-family structures right next to each other in the R four zoning district? That's my, that's my dilemma.
Got it. Thank you. That's really helpful.
So I have a question, Janet. Just let's say that we said that, you know, we've, we we changed the lot size to be five per acre. And then the zoning allows a single family or duplex on, could up to that on each lot. But if there's going to be more than two units on a lot, that that requires a conditional use permit. Would that be helpful?
You have to say that again, David. I'm sorry.
Okay, so let's say in the R four district, we said any, any, anytime that a single-family dwelling is allowed, a duplex is also allowed.
And that is already the case, but yes.
Okay, and then if somebody wants to have more than two units on a on a, or say, let's better way to put it, from three to five units on that same lot, that would require a conditional use permit.
Well, that kind of gets into what I wanted to talk under new business was the other portion that we have to meet in state statute. But we can talk about it all at once. I I've so you're
Yeah, I'm just trying
Three or more, you think making three are more conditional?
Three to five in in the R four district. Which actually we named our five, but we probably don't want to go through all that now.
Let me see if I can get to, hold on a minute. I need to, let me try to get a different window open for us. So we can get some perspective as to what David is use table. Let's see, are you still seeing that same page, folks?
Yes.
So I want to stop sharing. And then I want to share this one. I think so this is what we're looking at currently. If that helps. Single, two, three or four, and multifamily is five and above. You're saying are you suggesting, David, adding, potentially adding a definition in here? That makes something conditional? Five or more is already conditional, say, in the R four. So it's, it's, it's not off the table.
Right. Right, well, I guess, I guess the three, three or four, for example, is permitted. But you have to have right now, that ten thousand square feet per unit. You can have a duplex, but you need two single-family size, you know, you need half an acre right now to do that. And what I'm suggesting is that if if you could fit a single-family house in an R four on that, what would become eight thousand square feet, why not say a two-family house would be the same? It would require the same eight thousand square feet.
Okay, this is what I want to talk to you on our new business is other communities are combining single and two-family as one singular definition.
Yeah.
And then also it only becomes three or more.
That's what I was suggesting. I think basically, you've, your explanation is much better.
That's okay. I've been scouring other people's to see how they've been tackling it, and it's it's along the same vein as what we've we've been thinking about. So I can show you. How do I, I guess I need to do this. Bear with me a minute, I had it up. This might help you folks as a visual as to what what David and I are kind of struggling with and suggesting at the same time. Montpelier is condensing one, one through, one and two, which they already had, to one through four. And then a multi has two different definitions.
Yeah. Okay, so in Montpelier, they're saying that any place a single-family house could be built on eighty-seven hundred square foot, they would allow up to a four-family on that lot. Not eighty-seven hundred square feet per unit, but eighty-seven hundred square feet or up to four dwelling units. Is that what they're they're saying?
Yeah, and this, he, Mike started to do this when it was still drafted at meeting four dwelling units. And now that the rule came out as five, I think they're going to be changing this. But this just shows you visually what we're, what we're thinking, what I think we should do.
Mm-hmm.
Or at least talk about and get to.
And so then my question is, is, is having the R four district allow up to five units per eighty-seven hundred square foot lot? So is that something that that people are comfortable with? So if anybody here lives in a, in an area where there's a single-family R four district, which probably some of the people here do, just, you know, a question to think about is if the lot next to you was vacant, would you be happy if a five dwelling unit how building was built on that property? And I'm, I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just curious how people react. I think a lot of people in Berry in R four would not be very happy about that.
I agree with
The state made us do it, which is what Montpelier is doing.
Yeah, well, well, everybody's mulling that over. I'm trying to find a, like, a lot we could look at that would give you some pause. Not, not, okay, so then let's try this one.
Well, there's a bunch of lots in my neighborhood near on on Beacon Street or right behind on Burn Street.
I was thinking of where are you thinking, David?
Well, I I was thinking of Burn Street. So on, you're getting, yeah, so you see Beacon Street and right above the Burn Street. So you'll see, you'll see a bunch of vacant lots.
All right, so this is our four, this color. I'm going to turn it off so we all can see this easier.
So you've got at the corner of Burns and Sheridan, there are two vacant lots.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not seeing it on the map as you're showing it now. Or am I?
One of Burns and Sheridan, you're talking over on this side?
Um.
Oh, you're talking on the, the, yes.
And I've got it.
Right here.
Oh, oh, so and those are all owned by the person at thirty-one Beacon Street, those two lots.
Mm-hmm.
Then you can go a couple houses over to number, see number ten. Then the lot, there's a vacant lot right next to that that's owned by number ten. That used to be owned by the house twenty-three on Beacon Street. And then there's another vacant lot, BL oh oh point four. That one's owned by the person at seventeen Beacon Street. There's also a vacant lot at the corner of Burns and Sheridan, across the street from VL zero zero two, that I think is a lot. Not, no, this on Burn Street, upright, that one. I think that's a lot, but I'm not positive. If it's the house might be part, it might just be a large, single-family lot. Yeah, that is.
Yeah.
Well, so anyhow, kind of knowing the people who own the lots, they're not going to sell them, but if there was going to be infill, that probably with the exception of the lot next to number ten, which is probably non-conforming, pretty narrow. I suspect the other ones could have four or five-unit structures put on them.
Wait, one, two?
That one's kind of small.
One, two times. Yeah, it it doesn't meet the small lot definite. So a non-conforming lot, anything five thousand four hundred and forty-five square feet or larger. So between five forty-five, fifty-four, forty-five and ten-eight is still a building lot. This one doesn't make it.
Right, but I
But probably these two do.
Do.
Yep.
And I
This probably does.
Oh, 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 four probably does. And then there's another one on Beacon Street, forty-six point one, that probably does.
Yeah.
So anyhow, the the point is there are a lot of lots where there could be infill. And I think that's something that that's being studied now. But I I'm just curious how people react to the idea that there could in in this kind of one-block area be twenty units added? If if somebody, if each of those people sold lots and somebody builds a five-unit structure on them? And actually, VL oh oh six is another one that's vacant at the corner of Franklin Street. Didn't even know that was two lots, but that's owned by the house right next door.
And actually, that might actually be what we call a double lot. So under the old, old lot lines, there might be a dashed line between here, and their deed might actually reference two pre-existing lots.
Yeah. But anyhow, some of these might be referenced that way, but but I guess the kind of question for people to think about is allowing five, a five-unit dwelling on each of those kind of lots, something that we would be okay with? Is it something that the state says we have to do? Or is there some, some mechanism we would want to establish to to manage it a little bit?
I can tell you, this is the kind of neighborhood I grew up in, and if you were to put a five-unit building, no one in a neighborhood would be very happy. But if we have to meet the state rules, we have to meet the state rules.
Right. Janet, are there any other constraints on building a five-unit, like? I don't know, like, is there enough water and sewer? I don't know, like, is there enough water and sewer capacity, like if you were to add that many units in that small of a space, um, like those are. Roads, like anything else that is a constraint there? Or is this it?
Uh, no, it's, it's not it, uh, the roads wouldn't be a problem. Um, it would be things like, would we have to consider putting our setbacks to a lesser amount? Um, what would be our height requirement? So in order to get, say, five units on VL oh oh six, are we going to cap it at? Can we, how? Do we cap it at thirty six feet high? So, and then make our, uh, lot coverage a higher number so they could cover the lot? There's a lot of different variables. When you talk about multi-unit buildings.
Parking is one, because for five units, there have to be five parking spaces. That are accessible.
Right.
And that could be. That could be a challenge. But I, I, in my mind, I'm kind of thinking that the, the, the lot coverage. Sort of requirements, the setbacks and all should be consistent with what's there.
Yeah.
So, so we couldn't put a five story building there, it would have to be what, thirty six? Feet is at the current. Whatever the, you know, the current is, meaning these houses.
Current is thirty six feet high, yeah.
Houses here are mostly one or two story.
And that's less than thirty six?
Yeah, yeah, Rosemary.
Uh, what size are these lots? Roughly, I mean, they all look like they're about the same size, but. Do you know Janet?
The, the lot on the screen?
Yeah.
Sure, like, for example, this one I'm hovering over.
Yes.
Is point one four acres or a smidge over six thousand square feet? So this is a buildable lot on paper as we speak.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, because they don't look, you know, they don't look that big, or they didn't to me, so. And I know David exactly where they are, but I just never considered them to be.
Well, and.
Accommodating that.
And they're largely, pretty much similar size to a lot of the other lots there that have, currently have single family houses.
Yeah.
I just noticed because I walk there all the time.
Sure.
But making, there's a lot of potential for infill.
So seventeen is the same size as vacant lot four. The owner, as David said, the owner of this lot is, lives here, you could. Put the same size house right over there with garages and sheds and everything else they've got going on.
Yeah, where it would be a problem is. To be able to figure out how to have enough parking spaces for more than, than a couple of units.
Right, and the, and as you saw, parking says, they, they said, uh. One parking space per dwelling unit is what we need to be now. So none, none of this mystical, magical, then based on the number of bedrooms kind of deal, so it makes it easy, at least from zoning standpoint.
Right. And it, and that's, that's, that's reasonable and fine, but I guess, you know, it might just be that by the time you get setback requirements. And building height requirements. And parking requirements that some of these lots, you really couldn't fit a five unit. Dwelling unit structure there. Effectively, that might be the control.
Right, I think that's why I asked the question, because. Like, yes, trying to get a five unit structure on one of these with parking with. Um, height requirements, all those things sounds. Like it's challenging, um. And so if we were to allow that in the places that we're talking about, we're kind of saying theoretically you could do that. But realistically, once we consider all of these other factors. We, a, a two unit is possible, three maybe, but it sounds like five would be. Not?
Yeah, I think, in my view, any of these lots could easily have a two, a duplex. And it wouldn't look any really much different than what's, what's around here. Uh, maybe even a triplex, but if you get to four or five, it's. Uh, I'm not sure they could be fit into this unless somebody bought two lots. Next to each other. But, you know, what was sort of, on my mind is the state. Interpretation of the law seemed to be saying if you met the lot size requirement, then you could actually. Have that be the number of units per acre. But it's, that's administratively impossible. So that's, that's the.
That's our.
Funky thing.
Yeah, because we could, um, I mean, we could set our, our setbacks back to something, you know, what they were previously, we, we could make. Any number of changes on, um. Minimum lot coverage and setbacks, which we started to talk about in December, but. That probably, that conversation is after we nail down what it is that we really want to do here. In order to make this easy, it's not that easy. And in our four, by the way, our setbacks, front, sides and rear are sixteen feet. So your building envelope has become quite small.
Yeah.
When you talk about reducing the minimum lot size.
And if you look at, and if you look at, for example, the houses on Beacon Street. They probably all have a ten foot setback to their porches, ten or twelve feet.
They do look nicely lined right up.
So they're all lined up, but they're not, they're not that, and the same with the side lots, so many of the houses, the, um, the garages go. Almost right to the lot lines. Maybe five feet in many instances or zero, you can even see a bunch with zero.
Yeah.
So again, I'm, you know, that's the neighborhood I live in, so I'm just picking on it because I walk around it a lot, but. You know, the, the current R four zoning. There's no relationship to what's on this street. Those setbacks. And side yards. So building a house that met the setback requirements would be, uh, stick out like a sore thumb, actually. And some of the, actually on Burn Street, there are some houses that are newer, and you'll see they're setback farther.
Yes. Um, this one, this one is, this was a double lot, my guess is at some point, somebody bought it and merged it.
Yeah. And the one, number twenty is a new, that's a new structure within the last twenty years. That's a new house. But the, that street is, the houses are newer than the ones on Beacon Street.
Okay. So remember, the rule says no dimensional standard for multi-unit dwellings. Can be more restrictive than those for single family dwellings. And all that means is even if we have different lines for one and two, three and four, five and six. The dimensional standards I take to be setbacks, height, lot coverage, all have to be the same. So we're not treating anybody differently, we're not treating a potential unit any differently.
Yeah, I was just about to, to point that out too, that, that I had just noticed that same, that same language, and I took it to mean the same thing you did.
Yeah.
Um. So how, when we're looking at like the comparison with what Montpelier wrote, how would that sort of look? In the real world in a place in like here, for instance?
That's a great question, let me bring up, uh, Montpelier again as our, as our classic example, um. I don't know. They just, this is their uses, this isn't their dimensional. Uh, but you can see that they've decided. One through four unit is allowed everywhere. Just about everywhere. And then.
They're going to go to five.
Fourteen, they're dividing that multi-unit five into two chunks. Let me see if I, if they, I don't know that he has a specific use table. Their rules are very different than ours. Yeah. Um, he, they have their, um, dimensional requirements under each definition of, of what their, their, um. Zoning district is. I don't know if I can quickly find one. So, okay. So for example, let's see, what is, let's find a residential zoning district.
You have nice friends to share this with you.
Well, I mean, we're all struggling with this, right? Um, does it mean we create more districts, do we, do we finagle with the districts that we've got? Um. And just trying to react appropriately, so there are six, that is, uh. Comprised mainly of residential neighborhood, so this sounds a little bit like our, our four, right? So if you read their, this is their dimensional standards. They, they also do this, um, floor area. They, they actually measure the floor area too, uh, which is very, um. Finite, but they have a front edge, they have a fifty percent coverage and their setbacks are based on fives. So you'll see. There. Height thirty five feet. They're also not allowing a footprint bigger than twenty five hundred square feet. So this makes it a little bit, it's hard to compare, but it gives you an idea of, we've got to think about. How do we want to land? With our dwelling units and then? How would we like to potentially? Revise our setbacks. So that there's, as Joe said, there's, there's no fault of dimensional standards, somebody's not being held to a different standard when they're not supposed to.
So does our, um, do we have a coverage requirement?
We do.
And is it, what is the coverage, lot coverage requirement?
In R four? Uh, let's see. Is it this one? Nope. R four is fifty percent lot coverage.
Well, that's the same as Montpelier's.
Right, right. And as you go incrementally up, R eight, eight dwelling units per acre is sixty percent. R twelve, seventy percent. R sixteen allows for eighty percent lot coverage.
Yeah. When I see in the R four, there's going to be another, there's another spot where that N eight has to be changed.
Yeah.
There probably are others.
Okay.
So, you know, again, looking at these small lots. I think the, the setbacks on the fifty percent, particularly the fifty percent lot coverage. Probably is what's going to dictate how many units can go on a. Uh. A property a lot like that.
Yeah. So let me get back to. Do you, would you like to see on the screen the dimensional standards, or do you want to, should we talk about the uses a little bit more? Well, I'll open up the packet. So we know that I, we need to, we need to fix these. If that's the route we're going to go.
Yeah. I think we have to probably anyhow.
Yep. So then in an eighty seven hundred square foot lot. Our dwelling unit minimum should be sixteen or seventeen hundred to make that five. Dwelling units per acre. But. We could go back to leaving these alone and then just changing the density. David, which are you more comfortable with? Or what is your thought process been about?
Do we need to have, um? The, the density at all? If we're saying fifty percent lot coverage? If we're saying the setbacks have to be a certain amount? Saying a lot has to be, you know, a minimum size? What is the density gaining us?
To me, that, I don't know about anybody else, but to me, the density now dictates how many dwelling units you could put on a lot, it. It helps, doesn't help, it. Forces you to do a little bit more math.
Yeah.
So if you didn't have the density, this down here, and someone said, I want to build. Two houses on one lot. You'd start at this line. Does the lot support? Is the lot big enough to be built on, period? And that's where you start, and then. I guess the next step would be literally go down through, do you have at least sixty feet or forty five feet, uh, along the street? For a, for the front of your lot? Are you covering fifty percent or less of the lot and are you meeting the setback requirements?
Yeah, and the, and the dense, and the cover, and the coverage requirement.
Yeah.
And the parking requirement.
Right, and the parking.
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering if that might be enough.
Yeah, we talked about this last year, remember?
I do remember, we talked about it.
Joe smiling, yes.
I was, but I was in the minority because I didn't understand why we had a density require, why we needed a density requirement.
It seems like the end result is sort of, in practical terms, is sort of the same, it's just sort of a different way of getting there.
Yeah. But if we reduce the density requirement to dividing eighty seven hundred by five, it's all of a sudden no longer. Really makes much difference.
I think, uh, the consultant that helped us do this, I think the density was just. That's something that they promoted and what a lot of towns have in their zoning now. Is density.
Density and all of these other requirements are using density as kind of the. Limiting factor.
It was added, we had all these other things, um, but density was, it was an add-on to this zoning rewrite.
Oh, so we didn't have any density requirements before this?
We did, but it wasn't, it was very easy to build on a lot.
Okay.
It was, it was, you had to have two thousand square feet.
Now, this is what makes it impossible for like a duplex to be on a single family lot, as you have to have eighty seven hundred. Square feet per dwelling.
Yeah.
For the density.
Right.
You can pull your two family, but you need half an acre. And if we left it, we would still have the same problem.
Yeah, yeah, that seems like a problem we should try to solve.
So if we, if we, so. Am I thinking about this correctly, that if we leave this at eighty seven hundred square feet? This needs to become something like one dwelling unit for every. Seventeen or sixteen hundred square feet that allows people to get to their five, to meet the state rules.
You could just divide, you could just divide the eighty seven hundred by five.
I thought, that's what I did, seventeen forty, so we could round down to seventeen hundred.
So anything would have to be seventeen hundred or lower.
So then in practical terms, if we looked at the, one of the, think about the lot in David's neighborhood on the corner. That was. Let's say it was. Ninety one hundred square feet. Nice, nice residential lot. That's allowing for. Five dwelling units in some fashion on that lot.
Yeah, so long as it doesn't cover more than fifty percent. Of the space. It's not more than probably thirty six feet high. It's not more than probably thirty-six feet high as three stories. And it has to have five parking spaces.
Right.
And that's what the state.
Like to get to that, like you'd have to be building micro apartments or something?
Or you're building a big block.
Well, we have a minimum two hundred and twenty square feet for a one-bedroom in our zoning now. It used to be five hundred and fifty. So we've significantly lowered that amount and a studio is allowed at a hundred and fifty square feet. Now that's what I could call a micro apartment.
A hundred and fifty square feet, you could have a student apartment?
Yes. A studio. The bathroom is the only room that has to be separate. That's a, that's a tiny apartment.
But in a housing, in the market that we're in, like, that might not be such a bad thing if someone wanted to come in and build some nice studio apartments.
Right. Yeah, um traveling nurses or the, or students who wanna live somewhere and they just need a place to lay their head with a little bitty itty kitchen and a little parking space, or maybe they don't even have a car and they rely on public transit.
Yeah.
Like, for their walk, right? That's why we lowered that all in twenty nineteen. It to, so at least that wasn't a barrier anymore.
And is it my understanding that the changes that we're talking about um are the type of change that we would do in like a one-shot with city council, the kind of, I can't remember what that's called?
Is interim.
Yep. That's what we're talking about.
Yep.
And we're still on track to do the like more comprehensive with a consultant in the near future?
If if someone would please come, would, help us, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we're on track.
Yeah, like, I'm kind of inclined to say no maximum, like like, what are we looking at, maybe a year, uh maybe two years of operating under these zoning standards? I don't know what development has looked like, Janet, my sense is that it's not like it's booming.
It is not, we're, we're still all in recovery for the most part, nobody's, nobody's adding on. We'll see what spring brings, right, for other parts of the city. Uh I think uh people are seriously talking about ADUs again. Um but building materials have not come down in price at all.
Yeah.
So, the, I think that's the biggest limiter for um for housing right now, unfortunately.
Yeah. I mean, you know, these, these, building these small units would be great, but they probably wouldn't get enough rent to cover the cost of construction. Anyone else wanna share any thoughts? Caitlin.
Thanks, um, I guess, I I'm inclined, since, you know, we are mandated by the state to make some of these changes. Um, it seems like, uh making, e- even though there's maybe some concern about what the, on the ground that might mean in a neighborhood like yours, David, I think there seems like there are other things that would limit construction, so maybe maybe we don't have to worry about that, we would meet the state requirements, but there'd be other sort of checks and balances within the existing requirements that would prevent, you know, five, five-unit apartment buildings from being built on, in that one little neighborhood. Um, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm naive to think that, I don't know.
Well, one way to go out, go at this is just make the changes um kind of similar to what Montpelier is doing, which is just defining the single fam, you know, instead of having single family, you have a one through five unit is one category. And it has the, the minimum lot size and all the setback requirements. And the densities could just be divided to make it, you know, as Janet suggested. We could put that out there and let the city council chew on it. Where it would get more attention, I think. And basically just say, well, we're trying to do this in a way that complies with the, with the the, the state statute. And if, if there's somebody on the planning commission, on the city council or in the public who has a better, uh a better way of addressing it, then the city council could not adopt it and send it back. It would force the discussion, and I suspect the city council, there'll be very different perspectives coming from different counselors as well. Yes, Joe.
Yeah, I just wanna say, yeah, I, I think I agree with that approach, I think that sounds like the way to go.
I mean, it's just playing, it's just kind of playing the straight man, that's a great person. Just doing it directly as, you know, as we think the law says and and start from there, start, that starts the discussion.
Well, ultimately, it's there, gonna be their call anyway, and then, as you said, they get more attention than we do, so if, you know, people in the public are have thoughts on it too, they'll be more likely to be there than they are here. So I, I think, I think that's the way to go.
Any other, uh, anybody else wanna add thoughts? Well, if not, what I'm I think I'm hearing, uh, Rosemary.
Yeah, I mean, we can go round and round about this, but I think we've kind of come to this this place where we can present it and, like you said, get the feedback, maybe hopefully sooner than later, but um, I I'd be fine with, with going with this approach at the moment anyway, with what we know.
And if, if that's the approach we take, um does that give you enough, Janet, to kind of go back and play with this some more and come up with language that we could discuss at the next meeting and, and perhaps prove or is there more that you think we need to cover?
Are you talking about just eliminating the density? Is that where we ended up?
I don't know if we ended up at eliminating the density or just dividing it by, by fa, basically by five.
Right. So, we could make it to answer your question, yes. Uh, so to think out loud is, is um we make it allowable in the use table. But what if we not necessarily neglected to change something else, but we didn't change something else? And then they still couldn't do it any, anyway, whoa. That would be our, that would still be something that we failed to change. Do you agree?
I think, I think I agree.
Right, so someone comes to me and says, here's my plot plan, here's my proposed three-unit building, it's gonna be thirty-four feet high. I'm gonna meet the setbacks as they are today, I've got room for three parking spaces. But the lot covered says hypothetically, only forty percent can be covered. So what if that's the one thing that prevents them from being able to do it? Did we not meet the state's requirements to allow this to happen?
I'm gonna ask this question in a weird way. Does Montpelier have the same problem?
I don't even know.
But I mean, no, but if they're, if they have a lot coverage size, they're basically saying, you gotta make it, you gotta have you gotta make it work, and if, if, if having five units doesn't work only covering fifty percent, then, then you need, you need a bigger lot or you need less units.
Yeah.
Smaller, or smaller, or smaller size units.
Right, right.
I don't think that, I mean, I, I don't think that's preventing it. I think it's, it's trying to be consistent with what's in neighborhoods.
Yeah.
I know you can't argue about the character of the neighborhood, but you can certainly have standards that that have appearance kind of be similar, you just can't say five-unit structure destroys the character of a one, uh you know, a neighborhood that's mostly single-family.
Well, to your point, uh, half an hour ago is remember under conditional use, that's where you can get into character of the neighborhood, so just keep that in.
But I'm not sure the, the statute that they passed allows that to be consideration.
Right.
Joe.
Um, yeah, I guess, I, I think the, the question we looked at earlier, when they, when the you know, when the act talks about the dimensional requirements sort of gives us an out there because it specifically says they can't they cannot be more restrictive, they can be equally as restrictive, I think that kind of and that, to me, seems like that answers that question, I mean, we're, they're allowing us to do that, it sounds like to me.
Yeah. No, we can't, you, if, if there's a fifty percent lot coverage, somebody couldn't build a single-family McMansion. That filled eighty percent of the lot either.
Right. As long as they're, yeah, I think as long as the standards are consistent. That seems perfectly in line with what, with what I'm seeing on this.
I definitely have what I think you folks have landed on now, to, to work on this some more for, for discussion, for sure.
And, and I think part of the, my thought is you couldn't create something that creates all sorts of minute, administrative burden. Or kind of, you know, impossible to figure out whether something complies or not.
Right. Right, cause right now, it still is relatively simple. What do you wanna do? You gotta meet this test, this test, this test. And usually, if you get to the fourth test, you're there. It's pretty rare that we have to say no. Um, but we have had to say no. But not like people have th- thought that our zoning is so bad that we're saying no. But then again, we don't have, we didn't build one house last year. I have to report to the Department of Housing um, how many houses we build a year, and usually it's one new mobile home got put on a lot somewhere in the city. I reported zero for calendar year twenty twenty-three. So it's, it's, we're not like an East Montpelier or a Berry town that has the, that has the, the, the building growth at the moment.
Yeah. But those houses aren't two-hundred-fifty-thousand-dollar houses either.
Correct.
They're five-hundred-thousand-dollar houses where somebody can you know, can make some money.
All right, so I'm hearing revise some more and get to the five.
Oh, we have anything else on our, actually, it seems now that it's old, uh, old and new business we've been talking about. Is there anything else, Janet, within that that we need to cover?
No, um, under the new business, it was um it was, I revised the parking, that was really simple, that literally was, changed that one spot in the zoning. And um it, it's one of the pages in your packet, and I promise next month I'll have the board packet numbered and bookmarked to be easier for everybody. Um, but it was also condensing one, two, three, four units. Some kind of definition for us um, that meets the state standard, rather than have a single family and a duplex.
Right.
Even though they're both is allowed, why have, why have two definitions?
Right. Well, the only reason to have two definitions is if we have some parts of the city that do not have water and sewer.
Oh, right, underneath the rules. It's if then.
Because the fi, up to five units is if you have water and sewer. I think it's a lower number if you don't, I think it's two or three if you don't have water and sewer.
Right, and right now in Berry City, to my knowledge at least under some old ordinance, it said, every dwelling unit must be connected to city water and sewer. So that's why every random, every once in a while, we'll get someone who says they wanna put a yurt up on one of the vacant lots on one of our paper streets, and we're like, no, you can't do that, no, you can't put in. We have onsite sys- systems here in Berry City, but they're very old. And they're being forced at least to connect to sewer right now. So if you folks know where Lawrence Avenue is, there's two lots out there that have onsite subject systems um, and had wells. Springs, maybe springs, and they're being for, because they're renovating the house, they're being forced to, to join the water.
Yeah. So for new construction, the water and sewer is an absolute requirement.
Yeah, I'm, Brian and I, the Public Works Director, we're having trouble finding where that is. That's just something that's always been said by the former city manager and the former Public Works Director, but we wanna be able to definitively say that that's the city's rules. Okay. So yeah, that literally covers old and new business. That might be a nightmare for Joe and his, his minutes, but
I'll make it work, the video helps.
Yes.
I'm sorry, is there anything?
Any thoughts of reducing setbacks at this time, or do you want me to see what I come up with? With some hypotheticals, I'll use random neighborhoods and, you know, see what it looks like. Does it work here? Does it work over there? And come, I'll now, I'll present something?
Okay, yeah, I thi- I think that would be fine, and, and it might be that the setbacks don't change, but there is a mechanism to get a variance, or not variance is the wrong word, but conditional use, to have a lesser setback consistent with what's, what the streetscape is in that location.
So we do have a waiver mechanism for dimensional standards, but it's only ten percent. So, say Caitlin, you wanted to build a new house and you could meet the sixteen, you wanted to be somewhere within the sixteen-foot setback, obviously. Ten percent of that is only one-point-six feet off that. So ten percent is not big, maybe in a critical construction time, it, it might make all the difference, but anytime I presented a waiver possibility, people are just like, that's not gonna work, so.
Well, what if there was?
That could be further down the road, is thinking about changing that percentage.
Cause that would, you know, the percentage might change, so again, referring my neighborhood. Maybe all those houses, there's a twelve-foot setback.
Sure.
Maybe there could be a, this is the setback, you can get a waiver to reduce it to some minimum setback, which, you know, twelve feet might be fine, or it might be something less, after kind of looking at, at what's in neighborhoods. And then just language to be consistent with the setbacks on that block or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I definitely like that, I mean, I think the whole idea would, is that if if there was a fire and a house was destroyed and somebody wanted to rebuild, they should be able to build the house back to match what was there, and in, you know, in keeping with the other houses on that street in that neighborhood, so if the zoning doesn't allow that and they have to suddenly build the house further back on the lot, that's kind of counter, counterintuitive to me.
Great.
And that's not really related to the changes for the state statute, but it is, well, it is and it isn't.
But it gives you pause, for sure.
Oh, do we have anything else under our, our combined old and new business? If not, maybe we can, we can now move along, our next, our next meeting is scheduled for March fourteenth. So, get that on your calendars. So get that on your calendars. And is there any staff update you have for us?
Sure, um still working diligently on the flood, my public meeting went very well, I think. Um people are starting to come in right and left, uh getting permits, trying to figure out what they wanna do. A lot of folks are now next door in the Berry Up Space, seeking help, which is, which is a great thing. Um I think it was the catalyst that finally, finally got the last word out, right? Um I don't know if you folks are aware, there have been two fires in the city in in a week and a half. One house on Harrington was pretty much destroyed, it was a three-unit apartment building. Uh they say the fire started on the second floor, but spread to the entire house. Uh the other one was on Tremont, which is probably close to some of you who are up on the hill. Uh ninety Tremont had a, had a um a pretty bad fire. Um I don't think they're living in it now, they got all the puppy dogs out, but um tis the season, right? It seemed like the fire trucks have been pretty busy. Uh let's see, our newest assessors are working diligently away at our grand list. Um they're on vacation this week, but the nice part is, is that the firm that's doing our reappraisal is also helping us. Get caught up on old permits and he's literally been out, he did ten, ten uh home reviews in one day for us. So you think about a backlog of seven, eight years, um that's good, that that at least starts to help. The city move forward, um so that's a good thing. Um buyouts is the ever-present um conundrum that we face. Uh Pike Street, if any of you are familiar where Pike Street is in the city, they were landslide damaged. And uh city council gave the blessing to move forward with uh a city buyout. So the nice thing is, is I'm not gonna have to do that application, those applications this time, like I did the Brook Street ones. Um because I just don't have the time, Vermont Emergency Management is helping us. Uh I'll be doing things like liaising with the property owners for signatures and things like that. So we're moving forward with that one and we're still talking about, you know, what parts of the city. Uh do we think is a good idea for FEMA buyouts, meaning green space in the city? Uh versus the North End, which is part of the governor's plan, uh so. We talk a lot about River Street, we talk a lot about Vine Street, Scampini Square. Um some of those neighborhoods who were really heavily impacted and um so, yeah. That's the high point.
Hey, thanks, and keeping busy, that's for sure.
Well, yes, and uh we have a five hundred thousand dollar energy grant coming up that we're gonna be able to apply for. That uh piggybacks onto the Sanders money for the odd. So in my spare time, I've been reviewing three years' worth of fuel and propane records and electricity records. And building spreadsheets and getting that over to those folks, so um there's a lot going on. And just not enough bodies. We're like the little engine that could, right?
Yes, there we go. So our next item is roundtable, we're out, yeah, we've got a couple hands up, Rosemary.
Uh I think we're all sitting here thanking, in our minds anyways, uh for Janet's expertise and yours too, David, really. But Janet, and and I wanna make sure you know that there have been accolades like crazy for you and Carol Dawes. The last few meetings I've been at, so thank you so much for representing our city so well and our and our residents. I just sat through an abatement meeting last night and it's the saddest thing and I just can't imagine living through that with them. For all these months, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Rosemary, yes.
And Becky?
I just wondered um wondered about our Summer Street. Master plan, is that what we were, am I remembering that correctly?
You are, yes, uh great question, I haven't heard from the folks at VHB.
You're kidding?
No, uh let me see where that's at and I can report in. So some things for for next uh meeting agenda, obviously, I was not able to get to. Or have the time to look at the neighborhood designation, which I still wanna do. Uh but find out where we're at with that and uh I'm probably gonna have to ask for extensions, hopefully they'll get granted. For our bylaw mod grant and our planning grant. Um I co- consultants, Da- David saw, said this a year and a half ago, the consultant pool is slim. And not available and unfortunately, the heaviest impacted municipality is the one suffering. That problem, so, great question, thank you, Becky.
Anyone else have any anything to add? If not, we could have a motion to adjourn if everybody's ready.
I know I tried to hold that.
We have, we have a motion and a second and uh motions to adjourn are not debatable, so. All in favor of adjourning, say aye, or raise your hand, aye. We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.